Okay, we have six thirty. If everybody is ready, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, both please.
Brian Guzzi.
Present.
Doug Husted, present. Brian Mahan. Pat Reschewski. Cody Prizbelski, present.
Chris Billson, present. Very good. For those that are able, please stand and give the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, the virtue card is thankfulness.
Thankfulness.
For things, the week of Thanksgiving. Thankfulness is being grateful for what we have. It is an attitude of gratitude for learning, loving, and being. Appreciate the little things that happen around you and within you every day. Think positively. Thankfulness brings contentment. You are practicing thankfulness when you are thankful for the gifts of life, when you appreciate your own abilities instead of envying others, when you see the difficulties of life as opportunities to learn, when you enjoy your sense of wonder about the beauty in the world, and you are willing to receive what others want to give. Count your blessings every day. The affirmation is, "I am thankful for the many gifts within me and around me today. I appreciate my life. I look for the lessons. I expect the best." That's a good one. And our Board of Education guidelines are, "With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open, honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics." So, at this time, I'd like to entertain any public comments. Do we have any public comments? Tonight, with regards to showcasing schools and student learning, do we have an update from CWSA?
We do.
Very good. Mr. Chris Goodwin.
Thank you. The year, obviously, we have a quarter done. Our first showcase was very exciting. We have some students that are really engaging in their individual projects this year. For me, one of the most exciting is a young man who's learning how to become a blacksmith. We have some kids really, we, in order, really going back to Nathan Black's engagement. And he always, anytime I see Nathan, I always think about engagement and student engagement. And when we started to personalize projects this year and give them a bit more freedom and demand create, no more trifles, no more slide shows, we're getting some really fun results from that. We want creation. We want you to experience, and that's been fun. We're excited with the release of the report cards. We're excited how CWSA scored as a school with the highest rating in the district. And yeah, I don't mind bragging about that. We do good work, and I'm proud of it. And then, finally, I'd say our big focus this year is really our report card and trying to make sure that we get it into Power School. We're using Humpty as a model for a standards-based report card, and we're coming very close. Now, we're just, all the behind-the-scenes things are trying to get into play, and hopefully, we have that all working nicely. I'd like to say by the end of the semester, but definitely by the end of the year. So, any questions from the board about how we're doing over at CWSA?
Do you want to, just a few talking points on the report card?
You're talking about two different report cards.
Right, you are.
I am. I am talking about two different report cards. One's our personal report card against the school. That's what we're building, using the Humpty standards-based model.
Standards-based.
So, Humpty uses a standards-based report card. We took their template and through sitting down with our school building administrator, Mr. Black, one of the things he emphasized is, "You don't ever want all of those standards on there. No parent would ever understand that. That is too much. There's too much information." We have clumped our using power standards. We've made large brackets to try to simplify it. I think it's just the right amount of information for parents, while at the same time, specific, and they all have access to the tracking sheets, which have all of the standards. And so, the individual standards that go into the large groups, all the parents have access to those. So, if they have really specific questions and their person like, that really likes those details, they can go and find those. And we want to make, we want to get that into Power School. It's been outside of Power School for as long as CWSA has existed. And we want parents and students as well to be able to have the ease, to be able to check things with where they're at at any time. And so, we're happy with how it's progressing right now. We hope to have it completely rolled out by the end of the semester.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work. Any other questions?
Yeah, I like the hands-on approach. It opens up the idea for more creativity, so.
Thank you. We've got a boat in there right now. Somebody's building a glider. No, it's getting creative, and it's fun to watch when you let that creativity out, what happens.
Yeah, awesome.
Good.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep. At this time, we are going to skip ahead to Mr. Brian Grill, Director of Student Services.
It's been a busy month, but it's been an overall quiet month. You'll hear a lot more from me next month because we have a lot of working regards to school safety to go over. So, Josh Collo, our school resource officer, Steve Hersberger, Building and Grounds Manager, and myself have been going around the schools, completing school safety assessments that we went for training for earlier this fall. So, you'll be getting reports on that, as well as we will be conducting within the next month, practice emergency lockdown procedures. And I put a note out in our newsletter to families to let them know that this is a new requirement of ACT. I forget all the numbers. ACT 143. So, this is a new requirement that we must practice our emergency lockdowns, and they are unannounced by message out. And then, too, when we do the unannounced lockdowns, we will be notifying parents via Parents Square to let them know that it is a practice so they're aware as not to cause any panic or worry with families as well. So, just want to put that message out there that practices will be coming up within the next month because we have deadlines that we have to meet with the new school safety requirements.
That'll be in coordination with local law enforcement as well, so they can expect to see patrol vehicles in the area.
Correct.
And other personnel appropriate to the response.
Correct.
Very good.
But just so they know, there is, we will send out messages so they know it is a drill, and like you said, yes. So, Josh Collo and I are working together. So, he will be the representative from the local police that will be involved as well.
Very good.
So.
Very good. And again, congratulations on, you know, for everybody that, over a hundred thousand dollars through this grant process.
Yes.
Those monies are invaluable.
Yep. It's exciting.
Thank you for the work. Yep, yep. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grill. Is that?
That's it.
Very good. And I like that word, "quiet month." That's good.
I'll take it.
At this time, Ms. Lynn.
Yes. As you can see in your packet, we have not updated to the new format of the Treasurers' Report yet. Since the adoption of the budget last month, I'm still in the process of working on last year's, completing this year's, and working on next year's. So, right now, it's a three-year period that I'm working on, which is kind of confusing sometimes. So, my budget is due to DPI on November 30th. So, in December, you will see the new-formatted Treasurers' Report that will show you what is in the budget for revenues and expenses and what has been spent to date. So, you can see the picture, as you will, instead of just looking at a list of numbers. So, it'll be, it'll be a lot more user-friendly. We'll also start having some meetings, and I believe we'll be talking about this later on in the Policy Governance section, in regards to tying our strategic plan to our budget. So, that's kind of what I've been working on.
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah.
It's going to be exciting. Thank you tonight. And at this time, I'd like to have Ms. Marissa Harnish, our student representative at the Board of Education. First of all, I want to give you a shout-out for your basketball last week.
Thank you.
Thursday. You had a fantastic game, and I was enjoying watching you. So, the floor is yours, Ms. Harnish.
Okay. Well, winter sports began, so basketball and wrestling. The drama club did their play, which I thought was pretty, you know, and we went to it, but I think it's funny. The musical started, so they've been rehearsing Wednesdays for the most part. And we had the transition expo last Thursday, which was interesting because, yeah, pace of your life. And then, the window painting happened today with the art section, and they decorated the windows around the community. And then, last Thursday, the middle school also hosted the WAC Regional Fall Summit in Point. So, they, the student council went, and like, a bunch of other student councils around the state went, and they basically had like a convention, you could say.
Awesome. Fantastic.
So, what's the musical?
Cinderella.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
And so, I'm just curious, what role did you take in the simulation?
I was a nurse.
Okay.
And...
And how'd you do?
I ended up with like eighty dollars. And I was so confused because childcare costs so much money. I had three kids, and my spouse didn't make a lot of money.
You gotta work in finance.
Welcome to real life. You were the primary, right, Wood?
Yeah. And like, some people had dogs, and they only had to pay like sixty bucks, and I had to pay twelve hundred dollars for two kids.
Kids are more expensive than a dog.
Hey, you were a nurse. You didn't have to deal with student debt. Congratulations.
Yeah. I did have a loan to pay off.
So, it did open your eyes.
Yeah.
Lot of good conversation from your classmates on the topic?
Yeah, it was funny to hear everybody's like credit scores and all their salaries because some, one person didn't even have a job. Like, they relied on their spouse's income, which was not a lot. And like, three kids, and I was like, oh, boy.
It was a fun experience. We want to thank all the volunteers that manned the tables and all the staff that worked so hard at getting all of that information together. And it was so much fun working with, I got to volunteer to them.
Yeah.
To see everybody, like you say, that, you know, there was one table that you got a whammy at. What was that table called?
Yeah, it was like, Mr. Reschewski had this like bag, and you pick a number, and then he'd like, look at the list, and something would happen in life. Like, your grandma died, and you had to pay for her funeral. And it was, or you could win money.
Okay.
I won seventy-five dollars.
Okay, congratulations.
Yeah.
Any upcoming events that, on the radar?
The Cranberry Classic.
Ooh, that is this weekend.
Yeah.
And that's located at Assumption High School. And that's been ongoing for a number of years.
Forty years or something like that.
Really? I didn't know. That's a lot of history.
Yeah.
And there was a famous half-court shot last year. They didn't quite make it in regulation, so.
I remember that.
Let's see if we can maybe pull that out. That's something to look forward to. Well, thank you for being here, Ms. Harnish.
Thank you.
And, may I get any questions, gentlemen? At this time, the Fall Sports Survey, athletes and parents. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so, just to give a quick update, this year was a slight increase in participation from last year by, I mean, it went from twenty-two returned to thirty-one returned surveys. And talking with Mr. Han, he's planning, what he wants to do is work with the coaches for the future to create individual, right now, it's kind of a fall sports, it's a one survey that goes out to all parents of fall sports athletes. But creating with the coaches, a survey that is, has some of the same question, you know, some things that, you know, showing year-to-year, but then also creating questions that are more sport-specific so that the coaches are getting more from the survey data as well, that then hopefully, his hope is that, his belief is that then the coaches will have more of an investment to push completing the surveys a bit more because we've, each year, we've been trying to get greater participation and, you know, and it's a pretty low participation rate that we get. Well, I guess a number, a third better than what we were last year. But, and so, that's what his hope and plan is, is to try and get those numbers up by involving those coaches in the creation of the surveys for each season. So, but that'll take some time, you know, working, sitting down with the coaches. But I have to say, Mr. Han is doing a wonderful job as AD. I mean, boy, that, that is a role tailor-made to his strengths, and he's shining in that role.
I would agree.
True that some of the coaches I've been able to work with with regards to other projects or meetings I've been at, heard the same reflection. And for those that don't know, Paul Han is our Athletics Director. This is his first year.
This is his first year. Which is a bit of a, you know, a firehouse.
Absolutely. And we, you can't, you know, one caution, you can't do everything in a single year. But the feedback that we get through this, these surveys is so important. We can only improve on what we hear, and we also want to hear the good things and celebrate successes. But I'm very hopeful that Mr. Han is able to really tap into that group. You know, I think it, you know, to play sports, you have to do what? Get physical, and get doctors, and all sorts of kinds of things as a parent. And I would think that this expectation would be, would be something equivalent to that, you know, getting us feedback. So, thank you very much. And I think, like you say, Mr. Han probably has a good strategy and will to step forward to more participation. Do you think that new format will be helpful for spring sports, or what's the next?
I don't know, you know, because he's trying to provide a level of consistency with data that's been collected in the past. So, I'm not sure what his timeline is, or if he's looking to just implement it all with one entire school year. You know, I'm not sure for instance.
You know, one of the things we talked about earlier today at the admin meeting was developing some type of protocol for, for the season sports. So, what information would be helpful for the board? You know, just, I mean, as I sit here, I'm thinking, okay, so, well, how many kids played football compared to the last three years? So, what are the numbers looking like? So, we had talked a little bit about helping Paul with, okay, let's, I mean, because we have the numbers, right? The numbers can be used more, for more than just the board reports. But what is it that the board and other, you know, what else? I mean, and certainly, we've been, Doug, you've said over time, you know what? We need to be advertising some of these things at athletic events. We've been doing it. We've been trying to get that into programs. But, you know, and I think that's even important to know as we do winter sports, how many people play fall sports. What else would the board like to hear about around sports? And even if it's through updates?
Well, I think one key, key thing for myself is that it's proven that most students that participate in sports or other extracurricular activities, it could be golf, it could be drama, it could be other things, but sports are definitely one of them, that they do much better scholastically. They're much more likely to flourish more from a, from a, from a standpoint of the grades. And, you know, that's, that's something, you know, the participation rates, I think, as we transition from, you know, the middle school to high school, I think would be important. But I, I think the sports survey is more of a tool for the AD and administration to make the decisions regarding those, those coaching assignments. And, you know, I know the district has done a great deal of work in, in looking at our hiring practices and how we're doing things. And I think that, you know, that this survey is probably more pertinent to that aspect. Whereas, I think the participation rates would be more meaningful to us as a board because of that, you know, knowing that the more students that participate in extracurricular activities, the more likely they are to succeed scholastically, academically. So, those are, I guess, that's just off the cuff, that's fixed mine.
The other topic that came up was, and it also includes the School Culture Survey, is how do we take this survey information and really make it part of the Operational Expectations Monitoring Tools, which we have done with the Culture Survey? But what do we do, what, where do those fall sports surveys end up? In the results policies or operational expectations? So, that's something that we're thinking about doing too, so that the board gets it in the context of a policy.
I think it does, it is, it is somewhat relevant to our strategic planning document. And I know we've linked that in the past, and we need to maybe look at that.
Yeah.
Results policies as well, I think, like you mentioned. Yeah. Especially when you talk about extracurricular activities for students. That would be good to have information.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
It's a big, big, big part of their, their experience here in the Crystal School District. And I think that, you know, one thing I'd like to mention, and it's, it's really a community issue overall. And I know the city, through our joint meetings and our work that we've done with the city strategic planning, that they've made a great, they, I think, donated twenty-five thousand dollars last year, was it?
No, I think it was about five.
Five thousand dollars to summer programs. And that's something that, you know, it's a community issue where if we can keep, if we can get our youth involved early, element, elementary, middle school, you know, all of that is a healthy, we all talk about the good old days, right? And I don't know if there were, I heard it's, it's...
They called it the Summer Rack, didn't they? Back in the day?
Summer Rack.
Or City Rack?
City Rack.
So, I think it's a community issue that we need to focus on that as well, but then look at our numbers internally.
Yeah.
And how that correlates. So, good, that's good outcome from that meeting today. Good. Well, thank you very much. Okay, do we want to talk a little bit? Do you want to?
Yeah.
Say anything about our school culture?
Yeah, absolutely. So, what you have in front of you is the weighted scores for the last three years around our Fall School Culture Survey?
Just a little background. On our...
I'll just send that.
On our Public Policy Governance Monitoring Calendar, annually, we conduct a school, school culture survey. And it just happens to be on the calendar for this month. Let me go.
Yeah, so, as we talked around the admin meeting table this morning, we throughout this last year have taken this data, and I've pulled it into the different monitoring tools around OE expectations, right? Operational expectations. So, really, it feels like we're siloing this now and talking about culture outside of the context of the policy, the policies. So, our hope, Brian and I talked this afternoon, our hope is that we could really move this topic to the operational expectations that happen throughout the year. But for the sake of tonight, what we've done is we've given you a snapshot of the last three years. John started a document that I just continued to work on with AMS and High School. And I've asked Keith to just highlight, and certainly, the other building principals can talk too, how they use this document at the building level to really work on moving the needle for the next year. And as you can see, as you look at these, you know, in many instances, we're making good growth. But Keith, do you want to just talk, highlight?
And I guess I may say this, that, you know, for us as a board to really evaluate this, that this, just right now, without looking at the operational expectations would be a bit premature. And I definitely believe that when the admin team comes together and with regards to OE expectations, that this will be fleshed out. And so, I'm not really looking for a great deal of detail at this time.
Right. Keith's just going to talk a little bit about, and then John and, I think it certainly dropped into.
You might just talk a little bit about, I mean, what it is that you're, you know, what you have here. So, it's a survey that is given to teachers only, no, you know, no other staff. And the teachers, you can see the Q3, Question A, Question 12, the survey questions then group into collaborative leadership, collegial support, learning partnership, you can see professional development, teacher collaboration, unity of purpose. So, that as you're taking the survey, you don't necessarily, you don't see the pattern, but then, when you group it all together through a protocol, you can do it, the first year we did it, we did it with teachers, where you go through and you group it, you look at, okay, what, what are the trends that we're noticing? Last year, then, when we had done it at the high school, we just, I, we had them grouped already and then discussed, okay, what are the trends that we're seeing here? But, but that, you know, and it's just one data point. I mean, to give you another data point, this week for grades five through 12, we'll get the Gallup Student Poll results, which certainly are another piece that goes into the work we're doing and what we're looking at. But that is, this survey is teachers only, so that you get lower numbers, you know, you don't have everyone taking it. So, it's in the twenties, the number of people participating in the survey. But yeah, and it's certainly something that we'll use with our school planning team and throughout the, you know, throughout the year. It's a data point that we use to look at things. And then, it's great to have it, the, we're three-year running, you know, at this point.
A little bit about the survey, what you're looking at, so like, what do the numbers mean? First of all, we got this from a book from a years ago that we read, it was Todd Whitaker. But this is on a Likert scale, so it runs one to five. Five would mean everybody's like strongly agree, and one would be strongly disagree. And if I'm correct on that's the wording is? Yep. And so, that kind of just helps frame the thinking, like, okay, what do these numbers mean? So, you can kind of see where four would be agree, and three is in the middle, and what is three?
Undecided.
Undecided. So, you can kind of, and then two would be disagree, and one would be strongly disagree. So, that could kind of, and that's a weighted average based on the participants and their
And I'm going to go with the phrase you said earlier, Mr. Guzzi, as you said, you like that phrase, "quiet month." I'm going to keep running with that. But in that, one of the things we're just basically doing in this process is we're identifying, okay, this is a student, this is a staff perception survey. Where do they think things are? And so, really, the value of this really helps in coming back and bringing this back to the staff and saying, okay, hey, we have a feel that here's an area that we've got some strengths, here's some perceptions, we have some areas of weakness. So, okay, if this is an area of weakness, let's go ahead and pull into that. One of, we're using this as part of our next staff meeting that's coming around and just, and throughout various areas that, hey, you've spoken to us, we'll, you know, we get feedback one-on-one, we get feedback on general things, but something like this allows us to be able to get a more comprehensive feedback than we get from the whole staff on the same topics in those ways. And so, we're basically going to say, you showed us you want some more support here, so here we go. And so, it just allows us to be responsive to where the staff perception is because that's really what it's measuring.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on into policy governance. Before we do, I just would like to shout out a congratulations and thanks to all the teachers that, I think, they, did they finish their conference rotations? Yeah?
We were the last one.
We were the last, we actually had just a shout-out to all our teachers, but our second grade teachers. They said, you know, we're going to do a little bit different. We're going to have, spread it over three nights just so they can give parents a little more time, and they didn't feel this rush. So, we actually have a couple of... So we actually have a couple of second, well, three, our second grade teachers meeting with the last of our fall parent teacher conference tonight.
Okay. But a big shout out to all the parents and students and definitely the teachers that put in those long, long days. I've heard some great feedback, I'd like to wait until the other board members are here to share, but just some great feedback.
Go ahead.
From conferences, so that's why I wanted to make a special point about policy governance. G P seven, agenda planning. Uh, the agenda planning is based off of our monitoring calendar that we've developed through policy governance, and it incorporates such things as the surveys. Everything is one, in one place, and it, it somewhat dictates our agendas for the meetings. The board met last Thursday night, and we discussed this, and we found ourselves to be in compliance with this. Policy governance, uh, the outline that covers all of the operational expectations, all the guiding principles, all the results policies are all included. In addition, we discussed the fact that at different times stakeholders may have concerns that, that need to be brought into the agenda, and that, that in practice has been working very well. Um, as I wrote, this is a strength. The policy governance monitoring calendar ensures that our agendas, our agendas cover all operational expectations and other areas that may require the board's attention. This is definitely a strength, as before policy governance, many of these, these items were not reviewed by the Board of Education. In addition to the agenda items indicated in the monitoring calendar, relevant agenda items are developed based upon stakeholder feedback, as well as relevant items discussed within the public comments portion of our regularly scheduled school board meetings. Does that captivate our conversation last Thursday somewhat? Um, at this time, if there is a motion on the floor to approve G P dash seven as presented?
I'll make that motion to approve policy G P seven, uh, with no exceptions, no noted exceptions.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, O E six, financial planning. Financial planning.
Do you want to read the statement?
You can read this policy statement, please.
All right, annually, the board will review the multi-year financial plan that is related directly to the board's results priorities and operational expectation goals, and that avoids long-term fiscal jeopardy to the district.
Thank you, Terry. Um, I'm going to just, I'd like to, to read what, what, a summary of our conversation from last week, Thursday, and I, I welcome feedback, gentlemen, on the way, and Lynn, if I got this accurately. The operational expectation regarding financial planning has taken on increased scrutiny as we as a district face funding issues, which resulted in the first budget being approved last month, which, which was in the red, which will force us to utilize monies from fund balance to cover the shortfall. This brings about other expenses, such as such a short-term interest for funds that we are forced to borrow to cover operating expenses prior to our revenues being received. With this being said, we still find strength in the aspect of financial planning. In the upcoming months, we'll be utilizing the Forecast Five model to look at what our future may hold for us. The Forecast Five system is a powerful program, which allows us to look at many different variables to plan appropriately. Beginning in January, our business manager, business manager, will be meeting with board members and others to begin, to begin tying some of our budget figures in with our operational expectations, to identify where we as a district need to quantify our needs and what the costs are associated with those needs. Again, it needs to be emphasized that the work that is being done around financial planning is a strength that will enable the district and the Board of Education to make informed decisions and also to be able to communicate these issues with our stakeholders. Declining revenues are affecting all districts, not just Nacusa. This is, this is evidenced by the recent referendums that were passed in the last election cycle. Um, again, this policy has come under, this operational expectation has come under increased scrutiny because of our needs as a district. And to meet those needs, we, we've, the administration has worked very hard to control the costs that, that, that they were able to control, however, we still came up in the red. And you know what? If we need to do that to meet the needs of our students, that, that's what the board and administration essentially chose to do. But the work that's being done around, um, planning for the future, and, and this is evidenced by the, the artifacts and documentation provided, thank you very much, Lynn, for the work that was put into that. And I'm sure all administrators, you've done a great deal of work on this, so. This next year will bring us some difficulties as we, as we work through tying, you know, some of these operational expectations and other aspects into that Forecast Five analytics, but I'm excited, knowing where we are, even as bad as it was.
Yeah. The other thing we talked about the other night too, is that, um, we're audited annually by an outside accounting firm, and we have very strong audits every year. We had no findings this year, I believe we had no findings the last, however many years, we've had no findings. So we have very strong financial planning in the district, so thank you, Lynn, and your team.
Well, and I just want to make a comment too, that, you know, in the past ten years, or the past eleven years that I've been here and doing the budget, it, it, it has become increasingly tighter and tighter and tighter. So like I said before at the annual meeting, I should have presented an unbalanced budget last year. I should have done it. This year, I did present it, and this is just introduction as to what's coming in the future. Because the more we use our fund balance, and we talked about fund balance, the more trouble we're going to be in. So, and I know the board understands that, and I know you know where we're going with this, so, and I appreciate that.
Yep, it's a difficult issue, and, um, you know, we've gotten this far just because of the strengths of our, of your practices.
Our practice.
Our practice. You just won't let us spend the money, I love it. No, 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 but it, it took a team effort, and, you know, I think we've gotten as far as we could go.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and it's, it's becoming tighter and tighter. And, you know, we have to look at the needs of our students as being paramount to the dollar. You know, if we can't provide for the needs of our students, we aren't doing our job as a board, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, even though that we're in the red, it's, it's a great strength that we're being proactive, you know, with the Forecast Five and all that stuff for our students, because we care, so.
And I think one credit, you know, in addition to the audit findings, Lynn, is how the district and your practices have improved our rating, ratings as a district. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
For our bond rating. And that is because we have been adding to the fund balance for the past few years. We probably won't get rated again for a while until we borrow money again. Uh, and once they, they look at, they look at so many factors. The, the phone call with, with Moody's, the bond rating agent, is usually about an hour and a half, an hour and a half of drilling questions, which is kind of overwhelming and kind of scary sometimes, because they scrutinize every word that you use. So I know Michelle from P M A, our financial advisor, her and I practice for hours before the phone call, just to make sure that I don't say something stupid, you know, so. But our bond rating has been increasing, which is, which is great. But I just want to caution that because a fund balance is being used, it could go the other way too.
Right.
And, and sooner or later, we're going to depend on the community for something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. And, and even to maintain that rating, we need to, and if, if we aren't open and transparent about our activities, we won't be able to keep that rating.
Go ahead.
So, and that, you know, there's a great deal of work here, and even though we're in, we're in dire straits, we have, I have to find us a strength, and with no exceptions. So, any further discussion or comments? We want to thank everybody for their work at this time. I'd like to call for a motion to appro, approve O E six, financial planning as presented and verified by the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm really excited about where it's going to be going in the future though, too.
Yeah.
I think it's really going to be exciting for the board to see how this all plays out.
Yeah. And it's, it's can be scary too.
A learning process.
A learning process. Thank you. Um, next up, we have asset protection, and annually, the board shall assure that administrator has not caused or allowed any financial, financial activity or condition that materially deviates from the budget adopted by the board, caused or allowed any fiscal condition that is, is inconsistent with, with achieving the board's results or meeting any, any operational We were presented with the summation of our property and liability insurance and other, other, uh, uh, asset protection measures. And administration, in conjunction with the business manager, continued to, and this is, this is a strength, administration, in conjunction with the business manager, continued to provide excellent cost-effective coverage to protect the assets of the district. There have been significant improvements with regard to sort of compensation premiums, which resulted in a twenty-two point eight-six reduction in our premiums for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. That's great work. In addition, the district continues to provide ample property and liability insurance for the physical components of our district, as well as protecting those that serve the district. I think it's important to know that. We as district employees are covered by this, um, and that's why I can't say something. Um, it's a strength, and I want to thank you, Lynn, for putting together all of this Any discussions that I summarize it?
No, this is exactly what we talked about the other night.
Very good. We've had kind of a short meeting today, as I wanted to get to that basketball to get me started, we talked about earlier, and I made it, so it was good. At this time, I would call for a motion to approve O E eight, asset protection as presented and verified by the board.
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, the last one we have is O E nine, communicating with the public, and.
Should I read that policy statement?
Go ahead.
This policy statement under communicating with public states that the district administrator shall assure that the public is adequately informed about the condition and direction of the district.
Thank you, Terry. Communicating with the public is, is, is one of those operational expectations that is almost important as student achievement. Unless we tell our story and communicate our, our, what we as a school district, how we're doing, how we communicate with our stakeholders, that's what we're here for. We're here to bring transparency and openness to this thing that we call the Nacusa schools. Um, and we have just a great deal of, of, of new things. The district has prepared, and this is the report that was presented to the board, the two thousand eighteen, nineteen district communication plan, this is listed as a draft component at this time, is that correct?
And we've been using it.
Should it be changed from a draft to a?
Uh, I think it's, it's a work in progress, actually.
Work in progress, very good. Communication at a glance, this is a tool that, um, very, I think is very much a celebration. Um, you know, when people come into our district or come and visit our communities, you know, we didn't really have a tool that would, you know, in a, in a, in a page or two, show what we as a school district are made of. And this is something that, when I walk into the, the city, the city, uh, office down there, when I see stuff about the Y M C A or different things, I'm going to see stuff about the schools that are available in this area and what these schools can do for you. And I think it's a powerful communication tool. There's been a, a great deal of work, in fact, I would say it's been a huge burden on our resources over the last year to work on all of these issues, the newsletters, the school webpages, um, Facebook, district profile page, and the district strategic planning document. Um, the planning document is something that we engaged with the public this time last year, and a great deal of work was done that, that really moved us. I'd like to read a summary of what we found, we did not find any, any exceptions. The development of the communication improvement plan provides for a purposeful and deliberate methodology for disseminating information important to our students and our, and families, as well as staff. Much work has been done on this already, this is the draft document, and we will be able to evaluate it more effectively as it is instituted throughout this year and next. The communication at a glance plan also provides for a purposeful and directed approach. The newsletter and school webpages, Parent Square and community conversations, among others, provides for a wealth of information. A great deal of work and resources have been, has been dedicated to communicating with our stakeholders. We need to continue to identify and evaluate the effectiveness of this communication and seek to ensure that we are reaching the appropriate populations and that the information is relevant to them. The development of the district profile page should prove very valuable in celebrating and sharing the successes of our schools to those who have an interest in learning what we provide, and congratulations on a job well done to all those who have worked so hard on the communication tools outlined within this operational expectation. The burden of, or the, the wealth of information that's been developed is just truly extraordinary, ladies and gentlemen. We just need to continue to ensure that it's reaching a population that needs to hear about it. And that was only, the only part of our discussion, I think, that we really, really talked about. Doug, any comments on?
Well, the one thing that I recall from the conversations that we talked about, um, starting to look at ways that we can, how, how we can determine if, measure if, if the, if the communication is, is effective, so that's really the, the onus for us now, is to work on that part of it. But we certainly have some really strong communication tools.
Very strong. And again, I'd say almost an overkill, but at some point, we may have to question whether or not we're devoting too much resources to it. But until, you know, it's a hard one, isn't it? How do you know you're doing too much? Um, but there is a point where, you know, we are, we're here to educate the students as well, but I certainly appreciate the efforts that have been made, and I, I know that, you know, the work in Facebook and the work in the district newsletters has, you know, I've heard about it, and, you know, we just need to ensure that, you know, those others that are out there that may not have heard about it, we can always maybe try to find some different ways to do, to, 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 to get to them. Um.
But.
Well, and, and everybody is responsible, Dan has been kind of taking the lead with, this is really powerful, this map of the whole year, so I think it, we're not guessing, we're really trying to map out to this plan, so.
That's the communication improvement plan?
Yeah, well, this is kind of the at a glance.
At a glance, I got it right here, yep, yep, yep.
So, yeah, we're just being taught to do multiple layers of communication, and, yeah, it's unfolding nicely, and the buildings have been, there's a communication, what do we call it, communication champion at each building, so nightly, I'm getting Facebook messages from each school, and because I know the strategic plan so well, I'm like, okay, yep, there's engaged learning, there's equity, it's just so we're giving multiple snapshots of that work, so, I understand along to the communication champion.
I see that as well, you know, and I enjoy those, those Facebook input and things of that nature, but then I also sometimes feel guilty for saying, hey, guys, we want this information, and knowing that you took the time out of your days, or your champions took the time out of their days to do that, and very purposefully, and I want you to know it's greatly appreciated, even though I know it's gotta be a burden, but information is power, information is power.
That's communicating with the public.
With regards to communicating with the public, anything to celebrate with that? We, we did talk about, we need to revisit working with the city a little bit, and sharing some of this with our local other stakeholders, be it Town of Saratoga, Town of Rome, and the Town of Fort Edwards, but this is a strength, and I thank you very much for it. Without any further discussion, I'd like to call for a motion to approve OE 10, communication with the public as presented and verified by the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. With the consent agenda, would anyone be willing to speak with regards to the employment? If not, I'd like to, Cody, would you mind talking about the donations?
Sure. Backpack for Kids, we have $2.50 from Lake Arrowhead, $1.30 from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, $25 from Sacred Heart, and $100 from David and Carol Sonnenberg.
Thank you very much for those donations, that backpack for kids is invaluable, invaluable outside.
How many kids are we serving, I don't know?
Thirty-five, all right, 144 people.
A hundred and forty-four.
It keeps growing.
Wow, that's, that's a huge, huge, huge number. Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Future meetings, agenda items, we have a board workshop scheduled on December 18th, 2018, and the regular board meeting scheduled, we have the wrong dates here.
Thirteenth, board workshop.
Board workshop will be on December 13th.
And the meeting on the 18th.
And the regular board meeting will be on the 18th, and just, you know, that, just for the public's awareness, the board workshop that we do on the Thursday before the regular board meeting is an opportunity for us to dig deeper into some of the operational expectations, so that, you know, we can use the time that we have here tonight more effectively. But it is an open meeting posted, it begins at 6:00 PM on a Thursday, December 13th, at 6:30 for the regular board shop meeting. We need, and we also will be approving the district calendar next month, and policy governance will be covering our two academic performance, ELA and math. This is a hefty one, so I assume there's gonna be some homework prior to our meeting, prior to our workshop.
Yeah, so what's gonna happen is, on the 13th, the admin team needs to talk more about this, but each building's gonna be bringing a team to talk about the report card, and certainly, we've been talking about academic achievement, there's certainly some things to celebrate with our report cards, but we really wanna dive in and hear from our teams at each school about the practices, the work that we're continually doing, 'cause this is not something we're just turning on, it's been a continuum of work over the last couple years to really show improvements in those areas, so that'll be happening next month, and that probably is gonna take up that full hour on the 13th, where we really focus in on the results policies. So we'll have a small team from each school, and should be, I'm excited.
Very good.
Share that with the board.
Very good. We also discussed last month, we're gonna be scheduling a retreat sometime in January, February, so that we as a board can get together and talk about some of the bigger items.
Yep.
With that, I'd like to wish everybody here and with us on TV a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And, you know, true to the virtue that we've read at the next meeting, be thankful for what we have, and lots of joy, the gifts that we have for today. And at this time, I'm looking for...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Go ahead.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, really appreciate being here, how did, how did you do, Mom?
Yes?